I saw the harbor lines that only told me we were parting. The same old harbor lines that once brought you to me.
We're going to call it Tuesday, February 4th, Manistee City Council meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I'm a Republican, I give the flag of the United States of America and through the Republican Party stands one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice.
Beside us is the sea.
Here.
President.
Councilmember Horrible.
Here.
Councilmember Gutsby.
Here.
Mayor Tamsary.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock.
Here.
Councilmember Guston.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Public safety director.
Here.
And city engineer.
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments and agenda-related items, this is a portion of the meeting. If anyone in attendance has a comment on tonight's agenda, please come forth. Is there anyone in attendance who'd like to comment on tonight's agenda?
I would.
Please state your name.
Ed Zane, Zane Davenport Trucking. I thought I was going to be on the agenda tonight. I was told that Mr. Deitch wasn't going to be here. I might not be on the agenda, but I see Mr. Deitch and Mr. Saylor are here and I was wondering why I was omitted at the last council meeting.
They were waiting on some information. We didn't know if we'd have that in time for tonight's meeting, however, we have scheduled a discussion for next week.
Okay, so I can make my comments at the end of the meeting then?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to comment on tonight's agenda? Sign on when we move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include: approval minutes, approval payroll, cash balances report, notification regarding next work session, consideration of Manistee World of Arts and Crafts use of Verts American Park, consideration of authorizing the annual water for warmth five cap, and consideration of American Legion auxiliary poppy sales. Is there action to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion, the council take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll say it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Horrible, supported by Councilmember Cody, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Do you know, can you please take the role? Councilmember Cody.
Yes.
Councilmember Horrible.
Yes.
Councilmember Gutsby.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Mayor Tamsary.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock.
Yes.
Councilmember Guston.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have none. So we'll move on to notices, communications, and announcements. A regular part of each council meeting is report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department, and tonight we'll hear from Mr. Todd Harland, who reported on activities of the city's contracted waste haul.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to come before council to give a overview of our operations during the fiscal year, July 2012 to June of 2013. I'd like to take this opportunity and apologize for missing the regularly scheduled meeting in December when I was designated to be here. I appreciate Mitch making a note for me here in February. A little bit about our company. Republic Services of Northern Michigan provides solid waste and recycling collection services to seven counties in northern Michigan. We employ 52 full-time staff and generate $2.6 million in payroll that goes back in the local community. We also operate the Manistee County landfill, which provides disposal opportunities for seven portions of seven counties in northern Michigan. The majority of the volume that we receive at the landfill here in Manistee County, which is located in Stronach Township, 71% of the total volume is generated here in Manistee County. 14% is generated in Mason County, which we do the majority of the collection of that 14%. 6% is received from Grant Sherris County for the total volume we take, as well as 5% from Benzey County and a couple percent from Lake and trace them off from the other couple loads. So basically what we do is accept commercial, industrial, and residential solid waste at the facility. A little bit about our driver here in Manistee as we get into the contract. Ben is the driver that provides service in the city of Manistee four days a week. He's been with us nine years and does an exceptional job. And when he travels throughout the community, I hear a lot of good things about Ben's service and his commitment to the city, and he takes great pride in what he does. So if you see Ben on the streets, give him a thanks if you would. Safety, safety is the number one priority for our drivers and our company on a daily basis. We do a lot of safety training, a lot of defensive driver training for our staff and our equipment is, has rear backup cameras, backup alarms, side view cameras, so we can see the side of the truck as we work through the city of Manistee, which allows us good visibility and protects the general public as well as our employees. The current municipal contract took effect July 1st of 2010. We've done business with the city of Manistee for many years. We're in the fourth year of a five-year contract with the opportunity for both parties to extend that contract upon mutual agreement. One of the things that I think, you know, in future potential extensions is, as we've explored in the past, cart trash collection for everyone and the potential for recycling collection cart as well. I think that's kind of the way for the future in this industry, and I think it's important to explore those opportunities to provide value-added service to the residents as well as allow us to become more productive and minimize the cost to the city of Manistee. We collect waste Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday during the course of the week. Tuesdays during, from April through November, we collect yard waste in conjunction with Jeff's staff at the DPW, and we cover the entire city on Tuesday. Annually, we did do the spring trash cleanup. I'll get into that in the next slide, but we do provide household hazardous waste collection during the month of April. Forty-three residents exercise the opportunity to utilize that service, and it's a value-added service as well, and it's good that that stuff's coming out specifically by itself rather than the general weekly trash.
Todd, could you talk a little bit about what the hazard wastes are? Is it, you know, freon from refrigerators? Is it, what are some of those hazards?
The freon would, that's something that needs to be removed by a licensed refrigerant individual, but the household hazardous waste, latex paints, other paints, batteries, antifreeze things of that nature. There's a list, and I think, you know, going into this year's spring cleanup, which we're having in '14, I think it's important to get a little more publicity out there so people can take the opportunity to bring that stuff. You know, initially when we started it many years ago, 15 years ago or beyond, there was a lot of traffic, foot traffic there to the tune of 100, 150 people. So part of it may be that people, you know, initially had a stock of the material, but at this point, you know, it could be a little bit publicized a little better, so. Does that answer your question? Moving into the recycling collection portion of the contract, presidents have the option to elect to receive first and third collection of recycled materials. We have that there every Thursday that they can call the city hall for, to sign up for that particular service at a minimal fee. We also have the drop-off site located at the DPW garage. That's continued to grow as it relates to volumes, and as you can see, the volumes for the pomegranate recycle that we've collected are up to 65 tons, which is an increase of 8% year-over-year. The pomegranate recycled material would be your glass, tin, and plastics, and then you can see the fiber recycle as well has increased to the tune of almost 4%. So as you'll see in the next slide, the waste volume has increased this year versus prior year, but so has the recycling efforts.
Todd?
Yes.
Todd, I have a question. On the recycling at the county, or at the city, barn, cans and plastics and such, when I recycle, I notice that there's styrofoam and plastic bags in there. How is that, does that affect anything?
The plastic bags, we're able to handle. The styrofoam, there isn't really a market, and we don't advertise for the styrofoam if you look at our flyer. So when that gets to the material recovery facility, it'll probably go off the end of the line. So if you look at our flyer, we don't, we don't designate that as recycling.
I know it's thrown in there by, I don't know, by mistake or purposely or whatever.
Certainly.
I noticed it's in there.
Yeah.
A little agitated.
Yeah, certainly, I'm sure it's by mistake, and I think we can do a better job of making sure those containers are a little better labeled, as well as getting some education out to the folks. But generally, I think people do a pretty good job regardless of when you recycle, you can have a little bit of contamination, but it's improved significantly over the year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, moving on to the average monthly tonnage, as you can see, in 2013, we've increased from 2012 by five ton. To put it in perspective, obviously, we do have the cleanup in 2013, that could be a piece of it. Part of the tonnage can be, go up or down based on precipitation, because rain gets into the trash and it's put on the truck, it makes it a little heavier. So I didn't dig into the precipitation, but when you boil it down, at the end of the day, it equates to less than a pound per resident per week that was the addition. So we'll see how it goes here with the cleanup coming in 2014. Average monthly cost, that's increased. Part of it was based on our negotiated rate through the current agreement. Some of it's related to additional cart usage in the city of Manistee. Currently, 834 residents exercise the opportunity to use our 96-gallon cart. A little bit, a little bit is related to tonnage. And then the spring trash haul cost per year, as you can see, for sure we did not do the trash hauls 2011. Much to my surprise, the cost went down, $29,550, down from 2010 of $34,133. That really surprised me based on skipping a year or so. One of the things that I think contributed to that was efficiency by the DPW helping us on the routes. I know Mitch took a ride on one of our trucks for, I think, a day or so, and had a hand in helping us become more efficient in the routing and just making sure the education is also there going to be there in this state. So part of it's that, and part of it, hopefully, is people around on the material to toss up the trash. So that was good news, I think, and if you look at it, that's a $30,000 savings to the city, you know, every other year, so I think that's a benefit to all the residents. Finally, before I take questions or any further questions, I just want to note that we've done business with the city for many years, and I take great pride in trying to provide the best possible service, and we do a lot of in-kind service as we've remodeled the bath houses and the concession stand and took in part the ball theater. If anyone has something that, you know, they need to discuss regarding disposal on in-kind service, we're more than willing to help because we've been with you for a long time, and more than willing to give back, so. Any questions?
I disagree with you, or I agree with you that Ben's phenomenal. He's a great, he does a great job. He always weighs very, you know, does a great job.
Appreciate that, and I'm glad you don't disagree with me.
No, I don't.
You know, he takes great pride in it, he cares, and he asks, you know. We discuss things weekly, and he asks, you know, how's things going, have you heard anything with the city, so he's probably hearing a positive job.
He always talks to me about his trip to Florida. Every time, so.
He looks forward to that. That's an added value.
That bluegill fishing. He likes fishing porridge.
He's a good guy. I love him.
I appreciate the services. Your company does a really good job for us, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate it, Todd.
Actually, I have one question for you, Todd. I've seen in other communities, recycling issues where you're finding other communities or other counties tracking in and dumping waste or recyclables off, and I've seen systems where they're, you know, scanning their driver's license to gain access to the site. And if we see an increased amount of that in our recycling area, other opportunities to work with the city and improve those, you know, extra tonnage that you're seeing there, have you seen programs like that?
You know, it's difficult if you have a facility that's open to the public, you know, 24/7 or unmanned, it's really a specific thing. The recycle piece, I think it'd be hard to regulate unless you man it, which would cost us, you know, pay. On the trash side, I think every community that has a spring cleanup that has adjacent municipalities that do not, probably see an influx of that material. And in other communities, Big Rapids, for example, they have an ordinance and they have a specific individual that's looking for that at that time, but it's still pretty tough to do, you know, because they're very involved. But, you know, you're going to have some of that, and I don't know how you can really police it very well, but I think generally speaking, the tonnage being up is, could be potentially due to some precipitation, and then of course not having a plan, maybe have a little bit to do with the, you know, pressure. So appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Next, we'll hear from Finance Director Ed Bradford, who will report on the second
Council, included in your packet was a written memo on the second quarter financial report, as well as the selected financial reports that I provided with that. I did want to bring your attention to the financial reports. I changed the format of those a little bit. They currently, for now, are showing the current year budget and the current year through December 31st, year-to-date, actual, the percentage of the budget and the variance. But then I added three columns to the right of that, which shows the prior year, year-to-date, and the prior year percent of the budget, and then the year-over-year variance. And that's more for informational purposes, but it puts in context as to how we're doing compared to last year. I know sometimes council has questions about that. So I find that to be a very useful report, and it's one that I haven't provided before, but I think I'll do that moving forward, just because it gives a little bit of context to some of the numbers that we're going to talk about. I don't want to spend a lot of time talking about the memo. It's all fairly self-explanatory. I think the big things that I'm kind of focusing on, one is obviously what's the impact of the winter weather that we've been having. And the bottom line is it's going to be more expensive probably than what we had budgeted. We've got guys on the roads plowing constantly. Fortunately, we've got a break in the weather this week. So that's going to increase over time, it's going to increase fuel consumption, and it's certainly increasing the wear and tear on the machines. And I know Jeff's doing, you know, a real good job managing that and trying to keep the plows on the roads, but it is challenging when you're running those plows as much as we were. In terms of salt consumption, Jeff advises that, you know, he has not pulled his backup supply of salt yet, but it's probable, depending on the rest of the winter, that we will do that. Part of that's because of the lower temperatures. The salt doesn't work when the temperatures are real low, so there's no point putting it out. I think most people would have expected that we would already have been into our backup, but that's part of that reason for that. So I expect that we probably will pull into that. Just in general, it's been a hard winter. This is probably the second-most snowfall, or maybe third-most snowfall we've had. We had a record winter, as you recall, three or four years ago, and that, when we had that heavy of a snowfall, it did lead to overtime overages and some fuel overages. But hopefully, we have some room in the budget to offset that in other areas. So I think that's kind of important. Another area we're looking at real closely in the general fund is our transport revenue to see how that's tracking with the estimates that we were provided from AccuMed earlier. At this point, I think we're going to be above budget on revenue, but we may not be quite as high as we were anticipating a few months ago, but the chief and deputy chief Darling are both looking into that, and we're working with AccuMed to make sure we're getting as much as we can out of that. Overall, I think in general, we're probably going to come pretty close to budget on the general fund, but being only six months into the year, there's still a lot of things that can change. Couple other areas, just to highlight in the report without kind of going through too much. Water and sewer, we had a pretty substantial rate increase. Based on the data I have so far, it looks like that's generating the revenue that we anticipated. We're kind of keeping an eye on that. As you recall, in past years, there was some adjustments in consumption by the service, by the customers, and I don't know that that's happening as much this year, so I'm pleased to see that happening. The Oaks prison volumes are up, but they're still below their contractual minimum, so that hasn't really impacted our revenue. On the expense side, a few areas that were, just to point out, legal fees, we've been incurring some of those in our negotiations with Manistee Township. And also, our overtime is up in the water and sewer department primarily because of call, you know, on-call pay and call-in pay, based on how we're managing that department. We're keeping a close eye on that, and we do have upcoming contract negotiations for the next year that may impact that. But overall, I think the water budget's doing fairly well. There's really not a lot of other things to point out that are, that are of major, no more concern. One really positive area are the revenues for the oil and gas fund. The stock market, with the exception of this month of January, but as of December 31st, it had a really, really positive year last year, and revenues are 162% of what we hit budget, and that's based on unrealized capital gains, because the market was up so much. So that's very positive for the oil and gas fund and ultimately for the capital improvement for now. There's been a little bit of a sell-off lately, the last month, I think the dial's down 7% or 8%, but, you know, that's fairly typical. You'll see rallies and you'll see some declines, but generally, the trend has been up. Does anybody have any questions on the financial report?
Mr. Bradford, the water run thing we had running up, how's that going to impact the revenues and the, you know?
Well, the main thing it does, let's just talk about what it means practically, it's going to generate a ton of questions in our department, and Jeff's department are going to handle it. There's going to be a lot of questions about the building. We have a number of customers that are currently on a run water list, and Heather will adjust those off, adjust off the excess balances based on what their typical average flow is. We're going to have to do that for every customer in the city, and that's going to provide some technological challenges, but we're going to work with our software vendor to see if there's a way that we can automate that. Right now, she has to do each of those manually, and we have, you know, 3,800 accounts, so there's not that many on the current on water list. So it's going to be a lot of extra effort, but we'll make it work. I think questions are going to be, you know, a lot more of those. In terms of what the dollar amount is, I think the primary focus of this one, we haven't calculated it, the primary focus is making sure people's water doesn't freeze up. And there's dozens of other communities across northern Michigan that are currently in the run water issues. The main thing is, is, you know, it's going to bump up the electrical cost a little bit, bump up the chemical cost a little bit. You know, Jeff's working on calculating what we think that volume might be, but there's really not much choice when you've got this kind of severe cold. This is probably the first time in my tenure here, maybe it was, you know, Ed might remember when we had to do that before, but it's pretty unprecedented, the level of frost into the ground.
I know Mr. McCool is going to talk about the run water notice at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
I thought this would be the perfect time to have those conversations. Currently, they're reading it at 72 inches. 32 degrees is at 72 inches of depth, which is six feet. So even if you are appropriately running your water lines to the right depth at five feet, traditionally to get below the frost, the froth line, you're already into that by now. One of the issues that we are having is, is that with the, we're having a lot more properties which have never been on a water freeze-up that are having frozen lines, and there's a substantial cost associated with that in regards to the budget. That would be, those information would be picked in the third quarter fiscal, third quarter report to city council. So there will be some impact with this, and hopefully with the run water notice going forward, we're going to keep, the intent really is not to protect the mains of the city of Manistee. The intent really is to protect the service leads that are leading from our individual mains to our homes, and that's really the goal here, is we keep those folks off that list and we keep that water flowing in there, because it takes a lot of time and money to unfllow them. Yes, sir.
We do, too, though, by running your water like that will protect the water tanks, because you're going to get more flow, fluctuation of water in there will stop them from freezing.
Yep.
What's the duration, do we think? I mean, does this tell spring water thinking?
Come on, I was going to hold that off.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
This is perfect. This is perfect. Perfect timing.
I usually get my stuff closed in April or so.
Yeah, so everybody's aware that today we decided that it was appropriate to issue a run water notice citywide. When, you know, I've been watching a lot of questions, I've been feeling a lot of phone calls, emails. Some of the frequent questions that are being asked are sunshine and why make the decision now? And what we find is that when we have a cold spell, when we've got single-digit temperatures over a week period, a week's period of time, we don't have the freeze-ups during that week. Those temperatures impact the ground and that natural process where the cold keeps working its way down and pushes that frost deeper. So usually, it takes about a week to a week and a half afterwards before we have the issues that start cropping up. So the first week in January, we had a very, very cold spell, and then it was the following week where we had that large water main break on US 31, and a couple days later, we had another one over on Mine Street. We also had seven water services that froze during that period. So we were expecting that, and actually, we're pretty thankful that there weren't more than that. A couple weeks, week to two weeks ago, we had another very cold spell, and last week, we started seeing the frozen water services coming in. We actually had 12 between Monday and Thursday. Six of those 12 were customers that were already on the run water list. So there are already services that have frozen in the past due to the fact that either the main is shallow and, or their services are shallow, or some configuration. And you've got to remember, every service is different, there are different soil types in the city, so there's a lot of different factors that contribute to that. We get to that six, six out of 12, and we still have six that froze that were, had never frozen in the past. So we started becoming concerned, we started watching actively. There's a frost indicator on a weather station that MDOT installed at the corner of Red Apple Road and US 31. It provides over a dozen different pieces of data to us on a daily basis, but one of them is it measures ground temperatures every several inches down to six feet deep. Today, as Mitch alluded to, when I checked it, it was 32.1 degrees down to six foot deep. So the frost is, is deep. Since Friday, we have had another 13 water freeze-ups, and none of those are on the run water list. So as I was talking to people this weekend, and talked to a lot of them this weekend, they were telling me stories like, I had water, two hours later, turned on the sink, no water. So we're talking about customers that have, are actively using it, we're talking about heated structures, we're talking about places that had never froze before. So it became very clear after this weekend that we were at the point where the frost is down at the level where the water lines should be to be safe, but they're not safe anymore. So this, this run water is a precaution. Now, each time these, these services freeze up, we, we either contract if it's, if it's never froze before, the city contracts for a company to come in and hook up welders to it. If it was on the freeze-up list, then the homeowner's responsible to make those contracts, and we assist them. But what they basically do is hook up electrodes to two different points in the water system, they run electricity through that pipe, and that resistance from the pipe generates heat, and eventually it thaws out.
And don't try this yourself.
I would not recommend it, yeah. It's, it's, it can be very dangerous if you are not licensed and experienced and know what you're doing. We had two of them that opened up very fast. One today had been froze for three days and opened up within 10 minutes. We had one last week that had been froze for two days and opened up in 15 minutes. We have two other ones that have, have had the welders on for over 18 hours, and they have not thawed out yet. So now we're going to, tomorrow, we're shifting the operations on those, and we're going to have to dig those up and then try, try to thaw them by doing a closer circuit, so. So to answer your cause, or to answer your question on cause, we haven't calculated what the volume of water is going to be and what that cost is, but Ed is correct. It's more electricity to pump, it's more, like, more chemical expenses, and certainly on the wastewater treatment plant side, all that water's going to end up through the treatment plant, so there's more energy consumption. The flip side of it is, if you've got a welder sitting on a water service for 10 hours at $125 an hour plus, plus our staff, and we've been running 12- to 14-hour days since this started, because we've got to stay with it, we actually take the meter out of the basement, open up the pipe, take, take the ground jumpers from, away from it, and so as that thaws, water starts coming out of that pipe, and you've got to have somebody there to make sure you can turn it off. So it's labor-intensive, it's contractor expense, and we're at the point where these, these would start to multiply and multiply and multiply. So I think the route that we're taking is actually the best, fiscally sound approach, but it also is protecting the customers.
Is that going to have an impact on then the liability of who's responsible for costs associated with that de-thawing? I mean, because we're, as of today, we've issued a citywide run water notice. And in three days, if some residents have frozen pipes, is that going to rest that on the residents' responsibility financially for that?
We haven't had that conversation yet because we just put this in place today. But that's, that's something that we're going to have to discuss and make a decision on.
Yeah, the other questions are going to pop up and get funneled up, sure.
Yeah, the current policy for the, for the run water list says that once you're on the list and you are notified and we, we tag, everybody that's on that list gets, gets tagged. Each, each year, usually in December, we tag it and inform them to, to start running their water. And then we'll re-tag it to let them know when it's time to stop. But if they don't run the appropriate amount of water or they don't, they disregard it and don't run the water, the current policy says that they're responsible for the cost of thawing that line.
Correct. And that's as it should be. I'm one of those that gets the tag every year. And the first year after we bought the house and I received that tag, I'm like, what is this? And I called and it was explained to me that, you know, and in the past, apparently, the lines had frozen. And so now we would, you know, we were asked to run this stream of water. And it's about the size of your finger. Down our, we run it in our laundry tub every year and never have had a frozen line. So I don't know why anyone who was already on the list who got those wouldn't do that. It's to protect your own property.
We've, we've heard several different, sometimes people don't understand, some of the people that have frozen, we've had conversations with, some have disregarded it, never froze in the past. So we didn't think it was necessary. We've heard some people say that we were worried about having to pay for that extra water. We've had quite a few of them that ran a stream, but not enough. But most of them, most of them have a sink that's running and they brush their teeth or the kids wash their hands and they forget and they turn it off. That happens very frequently.
That's our leaders in the laundry tub in the basement, so it's...
So if you go to the city's Facebook page, there's a picture of a stream of water with a pencil next to it. I had a pencil here, but it must have fallen.
Can you show that on the?
I'm trying to look that up.
It's not a pencil lead, it's the width of a pencil. And that needs to be continuously running. You can put it at any point in your house, but my recommendation is put it someplace where you're not using that faucet continuously because it's just forced a habit. You turn the water on, you brush your teeth, you turn it off. So if you've got something available that, that's kind of out of the way, that helps prevent that accidental shut-off.
And that's one of the things that Kathy Bill explained to me when I did call that first year, was that our water rate, our utility rate would be adjusted so that, you know, it would be combined. And it's usually right after we have the last reading in October, November. I think is when I usually get the tag is depending on how cold it's been, November or December, so.
Yeah, there's, on one of the local TV station's Facebook pages, I just looked it up before this meeting. As of today, there are 21 communities in Northern Michigan that are running, running water. The picture's up on the screen of the stream of water and a pencil lead, or pencil width, sorry. And next year, we will do, we've got some ideas to do, to make these notifications a little bit better. Possibly sending out postcards, doing more proactive with the Facebook page and article in the paper and stuff, so.
Jeff, another question is going to ask quite frankly, is do they have to run in all their faucets or just one faucet?
Just one faucet is sufficient, just one faucet in the house.
How deep is the normal shut-off from the street?
Five foot.
Is it five foot?
The standard is about, the standard has been five foot. In my previous career, everything that we specified is five foot, six inches for coverage over water mains and water services. And if, and if there was a poss, or if there was a location where that was not achievable, then rigid insulation foam board can be put over the top of that. For every inch of rigid insulation foam board is equivalent to one foot of soil coverage. So if you've got a service that's three foot deep and, and you're in danger of freezing, you can put two inches of foam board over the top of that. And that gives the same insulating value that brings you back up to that five foot.
I'd have to tear up my driveway to do that. It'd still be more expensive.
So we'll go back to one of my questions, Jeff, this should be run until further notice?
People should run the continuous stream until the city notifies that, that the frost has come up to a point where we're no longer concerned. And, and then we'll do a notification and get the message out like we did today.
The second question I have about the frost depth, is that going to impact, you know, city projects in the summer when we have, you know, construction and things that everyone sits probably deeper than it's ever been in a long time? That may impact when we can start, you know, new streets and other, other projects like that. Will that impact that?
We're more worried about taking care of the snow today.
Well, yeah, today, well, I mean, that, it's absolutely true.
It's hard to say, it's hard to say what the rest of the winter is going to be like. I read from the National Weather Service website that they're predicting February to be very similar to what we had in January. This was several days ago, but at that point, Lake Michigan was 70% ice-covered. The fact that, that so much of the lake was ice-covered increases how much of the ice grows across the lake because you don't have that evaporation any longer. That reduces lake effect, lake effect snow, but it also keeps, keeps our part of Michigan colder because we don't have that, that equalizing effect from, from the lake, so.
Now in the backside of that, next summer, when we're hoping for high water, or higher water, this is going to have some positive impacts. Everything is...
Yeah, it's basic systems, so, right?
I'm just hoping for gradual.
We're going to have, well, the, the capping of Lake Michigan, one of the greatest, one of the biggest losses that we have is through evaporation of the Great Lakes. So that ice cap actually is preventing the evaporation, which hopefully we'll see some positive ramifications for that in the springtime when we're looking for the higher water for the boating season and various things like that.
Yeah, and if I can make one more point, then we just read all the water services in the city today just prior to making this a public notice. So we have current reads, which is timed with the, with the beginning of each month. It's a normal time for us. So all of the January bills will reflect the actual consumption. And then so far, we will only have to adjust February and then we'll have to see about March.
And again, to make it clearer, you touched on it, people will not see any kind of forewarning that their pipes are freezing.
The only, the only indication that we have, that we have seen on a regular basis is rusty water. Some homes, when they get rusty water, they will see rusty water just before the pipe completely freezes shut and that plug is in place.
And is that in every, because like I've seen rusty water in just one toilet, but nothing in the rest of the house and any of the other? So would that be an indication you can have it in just one area of the house and not all your faucets or anything like that?
For the city now, moving forward, running the water should not, should, should take away the potential of freezing your service. But in future years, when we're not having a citywide run water, if you have rusty water in your house, then you're encouraged to run that pencil with and keep it running until that rust clears up and then monitor it and keep, keep checking on it.
But what I'm saying is, you're not going to see it in every, potentially every...
Not necessarily. Because it could be, what's happening when that rust is, is coming out is there's a ice blockage that's forming. It's a plug. As that plug starts to move, you know, as it starts to freeze and then you start drawing water, it starts to scour the ends of the pipe. So you can get a slug of rust that goes to one fixture, but it may not go throughout the whole house.
I think I need to leave. All right, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, I think we're in the middle of a second quarter financial report from head.
I've pretty much said everything I wanted to say unless there's any questions regarding it. If not, thank you.
All right, next we'll have a presentation of the clerk slash charter white paper.
Sure. Council, we are again tonight presenting the clerk treasurer finance department white paper to you. This is a series of white papers which we have presented to City Council. I think we've done four or five of them in the past. After this evening, we'll come to managers, the city manager's office white paper. As we have in the past, we are making a presentation to you this evening. You'll then be presented with a hard copy of that material. This will be on the website, obviously, if you'd like to read it electronically.
It's in the Dropbox.
We will be posting this up on the city website for, for citizens who would be interested in, in reading the, the white paper. The goal for tonight is, is that a lot of information being presented, their thorough documents, would be to present the information to you tonight, give you the hard copy, provide you some more opportunity and time to read that document and then have a meaningful discussion next Tuesday at the work session. This is on the work session as one of the two items for discussion, this and the peninsula. And we found in the past by presenting it upfront, giving you the documents to read and then starting the real discussion, have been a more meaningful discussion of council's time rather than asking you to just kind of look at the presentation and ask questions. So that's the direction we're going this evening. If you have any questions though, any clarifying questions, please let us know so we can try and answer those. I'm going to get started. Michelle and I are going to present this. I'm going to do the first part, she's going to do the middle section, and I'm going to do the last part of the paper. So just as a quick introduction, Mitch mentioned it's the sixth white paper that we've done. Doesn't seem like we've been doing it for that long, but we have. It's important to note that these, all of the white papers really are kind of the next step after the professional matrix study that we had done a few years ago and the citizens research council benchmarking report. And in the paper, when you, when you read it, you'll see some references to some of the findings that they had in there. Again, it reviews all of our departmental organizations. It was drafted primarily by the city manager, myself and the city clerk with input from staff. And in this paper, we provide a staff recommended option for restructuring. You know, why are we evaluating these services? Why haven't we been doing all these white papers since the Great Recession in 2008? And it's really a function of declining revenues, both from the tax base and from the state share revenue and also for increased operating costs as well. You know, we can maintain the status quo by, because of those, those revenue pressures. And so out of each of these white papers that we've done, we've made organizational structural changes that will save money and/or increase the efficiency and/or, and/or the quality of the services. What are the objectives of the white paper? The primary one is to research the clerk and financial services departments and provide what services they are and various options for providing those services. They tend to be objective. They will present you options for consideration as all the white papers have done. And the idea is for there to be a consensus developed so that can be incorporated in the budget document coming up. And then finally, it also creates a succession plan. That's been a very important part of some of the white papers, particularly the community development white paper. And to a lesser degree, this one, but it does have a succession plan in there. Just some key questions, I'm not going to read through these, but these are the kind of the crux of what the papers are trying to answer. How do we want, what service levels are needed and desired by the community? How are we going to provide them? You know, how's it going to be sustainable? And that's kind of some of the questions that these papers try to answer. Michelle's going to do the next part of the presentation.
This is our current organizational chart. Ed is the, Ed and I are both department heads. I, as the city clerk, report to the council. And then as the deputy clerk, I report to Ed. So we have a little different organization than some of the other departments. We have Mary and Heather that are in our office. We have the Ramstall Theater crew, the site managers, the caretaker. And then most of the consultants now, like the...
We've got the IT, the electrical contractor of record, the brownfield consultant. There's 11 that we've identified in the, in the white paper that kind of are managed by our office, although they may impact multiple departments.
They used to report to community development and now they report more to Ed or myself. This is just a little snapshot of some of the things that go on in our office. 8,000 tax bills come through. Some days we have 200 transactions per day. That's not all walk-in people, but half of them, you know, especially when it's tax season, water bills are coming in, you have 100 customers a day. We have 1,900 payroll checks, 1,700 absentee ballots are issued. So there's a lot of interruptions. It's not just sitting at your desk, working on a project and jumping up and down to take care of, you know, customers, phone calls. Some of the services provided in our office, we have both internal and external services. Internal would be working with other departments. Mitch may call up and he needs this document right away or, you know, as we look those things up. Or it might be water department, you know, have Ed work on the, the water study, request for proposals, that type of projects. We also handle some of the ancillary, technical and encore functions that are not traditionally found in other departments. I don't, Ed could explain what those are.
So for instance, we get involved in areas that sometimes are handled by finance and court departments, but sometimes we're very involved in IT, we're involved in the asset management plan. We do the brownfield administration. And as you'll see in the benchmarking, I mean, lots, there's no cookie butter for these different departments, but it just, I think we may be, may do that a little bit more than some other typical communities.
This is a breakdown of some of the allocation of time for the finance director, for Ed. The biggest categories are financial management, which include a lot of the back office accounting functions, periodic reporting, financial analysis, projections, audit, compliance. Special projects could include project management, software evaluation, utility negotiations, union contracts. And other items are budgeting, IT, Ramstall Theater, debt management, investments and grants. Breakdown of my time. And then we put percentages on here and they all vary. It depends on the year, like for mine, for the elections, you know, a big election year, larger percentage of our time will go to that. Council's payable takes approximately 30% time. Council, and it's not just, like I mentioned, city council is not just attending these meetings. You know, there's a lot of archival stuff and maintaining the, like, resolution books. And there's a list in your, in the white paper document that details a lot of that. The deputy clerk in payroll and benefits, payroll's approximately 35% of the time. That includes a lot of reporting. It's not just entering hours and calculating the action check. You know, there's a lot of other reports that, you know, insurance and which falls under that, that's also, but... And she does deputy clerk duties, which includes a lot of the... And she does deputy clerk duties, which includes a lot of the qualified voter file, maintaining all that for the city. She handles all the property and casualty insurance. And the counter, counter, I mentioned the amount of time, jumping up and down, you know, waiting on people. Then we have the utility billing and accounts receivable, which is Heather. She estimated six percent of her time was utility billing, and fifteen at accounts receivable. I noticed on here, it's not mentioned for taxes, which is a good thing right now, the tax collection could be included in the accounts receivable, that I, at this time of the year, I would believe her time allotment is probably more, at least fifty percent towards taxes and fifty towards utility billing. Marina Gold Launch are seasonal. We have about a hundred, or two hundred, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars in our budgets between the clerk and the finance department, which then only amounts to six percent of the total general fund budget. And out of that, three hundred and ninety thousand, thirteen percent of that is contractual, which includes like the audit, the IT service, software support, our contract with the county to do our tax rolls and stuff. So, you know, three hundred thousand is our personnel, and most of the rest of it is all contractual.
I discuss a little bit some of the benchmarking that we did. We've done this as part of all the different whitepapers, and these are the communities that we chose. We'd also asked Cadillac and Potaski to take part, but they weren't able to respond because of other commitments. We tried to choose communities based on geography, based on population, and based on similarities, including the size of the general fund budget. So, you can see the populations vary from almost eleven thousand down to about twenty-five hundred, and general fund budgets from eight million to down to about three million. These are typical of some of the benchmarks that we've done in some of our other reports, and also that the CRC chose. And there's a whole bunch of information in the whitepaper document. There's a summary section in the front of it that talks about the general findings, and there's all the details in the back. I really don't wanna belabor the point here, because it's all there for your reading, but there are a few, a few takeaways. These are the areas that we looked at, some core financial functions, auditing and budget, investment management and the like, just different areas that Michelle talked about, the different services we provide. Those are the areas that we tried to benchmark. The results, and this is taken straight from the paper, have three themes that we sifted through all the data that were emerged, and the main thing is that these clerk and finance departments, much like the community development department last year, are really the Swiss Army knife. They've got lots of different functions and lots of different responsibilities, enormous variety of tasks and responsibilities. And there's really no cookie cutter approach to the organization, there's not a one single best practice. The other thing that kind of emerged is our staffing is generally on the low end of its period, but it's not, you know, outstandingly out of line, just generally on the low end. So, those are the three main themes, but there's a lot of good benchmarking information in the tables and the details in the back list there. The paper itself basically explored three different departmental structures, and then it also explored doing some outsourcing, looking at some efficiencies and initiatives, and then looking at a succession plan. Status quo is basically just what it is, keeping the departments exactly as they are right now, maintains the same structure, maintains the same service levels, maintains separate budgets like we do. It does have some negatives, it doesn't allow for any staff advancement or development, doesn't reallocate duties to kind of maximize some of our employee skills, nor does it really lead to a good succession plan. This is kind of the status quo org chart that Michelle presented earlier, that's what that looks like. This is the staff preferred alternative, which is to create an administrative services department. An example of a community that has one of these is Mount Pleasant. This particular approach would create one department, administrative services department. It's similar to the recommendation that was made in the matrix study, but not exactly, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. What this would provide would be a better alignment of skills and training with the work. It would allow for job growth and professional development within the department. It allows for resiliency and flexibility in the way our departments deliver services, and it also sets us up for some succession planning. The nuts and bolts of this are that it would combine the clerk and financial services departments, doing everything we're doing now, plus it would do these other items. And each of these is discussed in the paper. So, the first thing would be, it would add the duties that were identified in community development and Ramstow whitepapers in the short term, and realities, we're doing those currently. Most of those things that were identified have already been transferred down to our office. In the medium term, the building and custodial and building maintenance function, which is currently reporting through the city manager, would switch over to our department. We think that makes a lot of sense, because the two main buildings that the current caretaker takes care of are City Hall and Ramstow Theater, and those are the two buildings that we're most closely aligned with. So, it allows for a little bit better communication, less layers of management, being closer to what's actually going on. It's not an uncommon type of setup for that sort of thing. Another option would be upon the retirement of the current assessor, it would be a little bit longer term approach, is that the assessing would report up through that administrative services department. That was actually a recommendation that came straight out of the matrix study. They recommended that that be, they recommended the creation of a financial services department, but it would basically accomplish the same thing. And the decision was made, and when we did the assessing whitepaper, to have that remain reporting to the city manager this time, until such time as there was a retirement. And then finally, and this is really important, in the last budget that came out of the community development whitepaper, there was included in this current fiscal year budget, an administrative staff position, which has not been hired yet. And that position was to be split between two departments. By going with this structure, it would accomplish the same thing. We would still be providing clerical support to the, to the community development department and the planning and zoning administrator. It would just be accomplished through our department and, and the new hire, but also some of the other staff that was down there. The paper lays that out in pretty specific detail about what that would do. It accomplishes the same purpose as was outlined in the community development whitepaper, just a little bit different needs to get to that end. And this is the recommended course of action. This is what the org chart would look like for that. We kind of broke into different sections. On the left, you have the Ramstow Theater team, you'd have the administrative team, which would be the current staffing, plus the currently approved position that's in the budget that hasn't been hired yet. And then, as we spoke about, we'd still have the consultants that kind of come through us administratively, and then down the road, eventually, the facility management and the city assessor. That's what that structure looks like. If the administrative services department were created, this chart kind of shows how those duties would shift around. You would end up having an office clerk and utility billing clerk, which would be the new hire, would primarily do some of the things that Heather is doing currently. You would have a deputy treasurer payroll, so that would become Heather's position, doing those items. And this is an example of how this could play out. Some of those duties may cross back and forth, you would have to kind of take a little bit closer look at it, just an example of how that would work out, but a lot of it would be that way. The deputy clerk accounts payable function would be, be the current deputy clerk. Michelle would become the assistant director, director and maintain the city clerk function, and then I would continue to do what I'm doing. But this kind of aligns some of our duties a little bit better, and gives us a lot more flexibility down in the department. Right now, it's extremely difficult to cover with somebody absent. We have, there's times when Michelle is working the counter all day long, which isn't the best use of her time. There's times when I have to cover the counter periodically, depending on sick, sick days or vacation. Having an extra body down there, especially during peak times, would really help. But this department also would provide a lot of different services to other departments. It would centralize some of the minute taking, as is laid out in the paper, and just be able to really insert ourselves into different departments when needed. So, if there's a big mailing, for instance, going out or funding and so on, we'd be able to step in and help with that, be able to fill in up there periodically, maybe if Denise is gone for a conference, we could maybe have some stepping. Part of this also, this department depends on working closely with the city manager's office and their clerical support as well, and finding out what the best way to provide some of those support services are. Another scenario that was identified, isn't, doesn't go as far as creating an administrative services department, but it's just basically merging the clerk and financial services departments into one department. And really, what that is, is that just kind of formally recognizes what is required now, which is our two departments work extremely closely together, we're all sitting in the same office, we've got cross-trained personnel, and we pretty much function as one unit. We just have two separate budgets, and so that would basically combine the budgets. We would still hire that previously budgeted clerical help, the duties may be split up a little bit differently than we were presenting in the administrative services department, but there really wouldn't be any other big structural changes. You wouldn't have the assessing eventually moving over there, or the maintenance. A third scenario that's explored in the paper is to outsource various functions, either in Carter and Hall. The matrix study was pretty clear that that was really not a viable option. You know, the product, a couple of the quotes from that thing, it said, "The project team found no opportunities within this department that would enable a different service delivery approach at the present time, only maintaining appropriate control function." I was talking about the finance department. And for Michelle, for the clerk's department, they said it was not suitable for contracting or alternative service delivery approaches, given the nature of work and necessary support to be approved by city council. And that is one hundred percent consistent with what the citizens' research council have done with their benchmarking, and what we found in our internal benchmarking. But that doesn't say that there aren't some options that you could consider to outsource if it made sense. And some areas that the paper looks at are payroll, which is commonly outsourced, payment lockbox, the county treasurer could collect taxes, we've got the ability to do intergovernmental agreements like that, the county clerk might, might run elections. Or the ISD, through their business school program, could, in theory, do all of our back office stuff. Now, the paper points out some of the difficulties and some of the challenges in some of these, and as an example, I met with the ISD business manager, and they're simply not in a position to do that even if they wanted to. They, all of their schools are on the same accounting software, they don't have the capacity, and the cost would be prohibitive, they wouldn't even consider doing it. I mean, in theory, it makes sense, but the reality is, a city's finances are much more complicated than a school's finances. And so, they're able to do it, they've got six or seven staff, and they do it for three or four schools, but it's all kind of the same thing, and that would just add too much complexity. But we discuss each of these in the paper. It also discusses some of the things that we're currently outsourcing, to some degree, which is we've got our, some of our IT supporters outsourced, and then our contract with Manistee County equalization, which we've done for years, for doing tax maps and assessment notices and printing our tax bills and helping to maintain the GIS parcel there. The next section of the paper talks about efficiencies and initiatives, different areas that we can look at to try to gain some more efficiencies. I wanna talk about what's in use. Some of these ones in the bottom there were identified in the matrix study, and we've already implemented. I thought it was important to point those out. So, we did switch over to bi-weekly payroll, we had to wait until we negotiated, and added all the union contracts, because they had weekly payroll in there. So, that worked out well. We're doing direct deposit with virtually every employee. We just initiated a couple months ago, electronic vendor payments, so we're not cutting checks as much, and we're doing electronic payments for, and we get more of those in every day. Michelle's been the lead on that, and has done a really fine job, and that's gonna be useful for everybody. We're doing, obviously, the council electronic packets and laser fiche document imaging. Some of the areas that have been identified as areas that we might, might want to look at in the future, and are looking at, are for over-the-counter credit card acceptance. We do try to accept credit cards in several different areas in the city, just not over the counter. And the reason for that is, and the reason that most communities don't do that, is there are some strict payment card rules in place that didn't really allow for that to happen. Some of those rules have lessened over the last year because of a lawsuit, a class action suit that was filed, so we're still kind of sorting out what that really means for us. But that's an area that we're looking at. The purchase order system, we use a purchase order system in some departments, it's not citywide, it's not electronic, it's an area that we might look at, there could be some real drawbacks for that, it may not give you all the efficiencies you want, but it's something we're gonna keep exploring. And the same way with a comprehensive time and attendance system. Our system that we have right now works very well, we don't pay on our own platform, and it's not integrated into our payroll, it's rather expensive to do that, it may not even be feasible in our current payroll software. So, that's something that we're evaluating, but it's not, that's, you know, for sure that we're gonna do that. But those are areas that we're taking a look at. And the last part of the document is a succession plan for the city clerk, and on the community development department last year, where there was a pending retirement. Most people in our department are still a few years out, but nonetheless, we thought it was important to kind of take a look at how this might play out. The most likely occurrence would be is if we had the administrative services department in place. The city clerk, Michelle Ray, has got a timeframe of roughly four to seven years for retirement. And assuming everybody else stayed on, this plan, this section of the paper discusses how we could just slide people up into different roles and kind of move on seamlessly. The administrative services department allows us to put people in a position to do that, and so, this is just a natural outgrowth of that particular plan. And that's what this section of the paper talks about. So, in conclusion, the report that you've got, it provides a recommended scenario for restructuring the clerk and financial services department, and that would be creating the administrative services department. It identifies a viable succession plan, assuming that that first step is taken, and it identifies areas for further study to increase efficiency or public convenience, such as accepting credit cards over the counter. What are the next steps? There's a council work session scheduled for next week to discuss this, you've had a chance to look at the paper. The goal is, again, to get council direction to allow incorporation into the next fiscal year budget, we have plenty of time to do that. And it also will, one way or another, allow us to move forward with hiring the previous budgeted clerk position that we've been holding up on. Thank you.
And thank you to Heather, folded these papers. That makes it so much easier.
That ascending fold, you know. Yeah, the font just gets too small, but I want to see for it to be useful for you. And then, industry night council, a rotation discussion next, next week, where you'll have more opportunity to read the paper. And if you, while you're reading the paper, if you have some detailed questions that you think will take a little bit more time, please feel free to send those to us in advance. The more time you can offer us to do some research, to answer your questions, it would be greatly appreciated.
Thanks. We'll move on to concerns and comments. Citizens and comment, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are limited to five minutes, and letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward? Yes, sir?
Yes, I can begin. I've been here numerous times. I have more information for use on what I'm working on.
Thank you.
You and council and the city attorney. Last month, or last meeting, I was here, and we talked about being on the agenda and getting an edge to this dilemma. Is that a nice way to put it? Since then, I've done a lot of looking and checking and stuff like that, and so has your city manager. He has done, and so has the AES office. Yesterday, the AES took potlatch around Manistee, looking for other locations. They came on one that might work, but all the other ones that were in the area don't work for them. Mr. Deech has talked with CP Recycling, and so has the AES office, and told them, look at, you know, there's all our alternatives for Manistee. They are looking, okay, but they're also looking not here. An energy pellet can be pressed in Muskegon and Grand Rapids where more of the raw material is available, and they're looking now, if they can sell it to Tandu Energy Systems, they can sell it to Grand Haven Light and Power, they can sell it to Holland Light and Power. So, they are looking at all their options, okay, just so you know. Spring is coming, I have talked with... I have talked with conservatives of the three other companies, looking at wanting to be able to ship material into Manistee, but also shipping material out of Manistee. And I can't move ahead, the city can't move ahead, and your next council meeting or work session is the 11th. If I could ask, would that be called a special meeting? So we can get this issue resolved one way or the other, because these people need to know. And I guess, in my closing, if it's really a closing, I asked you to go back and read your mission statement. Create local jobs, industrial. And for the welfare, the citizens of Manistee. And with that, I guess I'm going to sit down and let anybody else have questions, or receive any questions I choose while I am.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Did you ever have your property appraised out there, that eight acres?
Yes, sir.
By an appraiser?
By an appraiser both ways, sir.
By who?
By an appraiser both ways, as an industrial, commercial property, and also as a development property.
Who did the appraisal?
You mean the name of the company?
Well, yeah, the realtor or...
On the commercial, industrial side, was Ray Kiefer, and I'm working with a Scott, I want to say Nelson, from Downstate, that does more commercial properties, and there's a very big difference in values. But empty property is still empty property in...
What did they appraise it at? Any idea?
I don't think that this is the time and the place to discuss it. I would talk to you about that any other time. There's values, difference in values is what the property is used for. What it's zoned for now is a lot higher value.
A lot higher value, but it's in commercial?
Been industrial, commercial.
It's not industrial, commercial, though.
No. But if it, back when I was in operations, back until 2012, it was commercial waterfront. The value at that point in time was less than what it is zoned for now, if it was to be turned into a Peninsula District, uses various condos and commercial.
Okay. I appreciate your comments, Mr. Sanguin. We'll certainly get this on our work session.
And Mr. Uncle, if you would like to call me, I would gladly sit down and talk to you, but I feel that this is not the place to do that.
I know what you have to appraise that.
Pardon?
I know what you have to appraise that, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there anyone else? Yes, please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Linda Wright, 41 Fourth Street, Manistee. And I'm just here because I have a concern about the ice skating rink, which is not set up this year and the previous two years. And I became aware of it when I, I work in the public schools here in Manistee, and I stop by the teen center every once in a while just to see what's going on, talk to the kids, that kind of thing. And I did that in this past December. And I said, "So you guys going to ice skate this year?" And they said, "Ice skate? There's no rink." And I thought, "Wow, okay." So I've been, since then, I started asking questions about it, and to find out what's happening with that, and how I can help, and how the whole thing works, because I had no idea how, you know, and I need your education on that. I just want you to know, I'm not here to complain, but I'm here to promote awareness in the community about this, find solutions, if possible, from community members that may not be aware, and mostly to advocate for the kids, to have a place where they can be active and outdoors when the weather permits, and enjoy ice skating as much as I did as a child. I do know that this has been a horrendous winter, and that plowing and street safety is the priority. I realize that, and probably are not going to be able to get this going so late in the year, but what can community members do? Can we provide any help? Can community volunteers be put together, you know, start preparing for next year and that kind of thing? I don't know if that's even allowed, but that was just a question I had. And I guess, the last question I have is, I don't know how the budgeting works for this. I imagine that there may be an item, a line item in the budget. I don't know. But if so, what happens, like, the two years previous to this winter, the weather was not warm enough to create the rink. I understand that. So that item, let's say there was a certain amount set aside, does that, is that retained for future years for the ice rink, or, you know, improvements and that kind of thing? Lastly, I want to thank Mayor Kenny and Robert Horncole in responding so quickly to my afternoon emails, and just, if you could, anyone who knows anything that would help me understand how this opening works and other community members, I would appreciate hearing about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment? So now we'll move on. City Clerk?
Nothing, Your Honor.
King Andrew.
I thought we just took an opportunity to respond to a little quickly about the ice skating rink. In the past, the vast majority of the cost of the ice skating rink, there's not a dedicated line item for ice skating. In the Parks and Recreation Budget, the Parks Department Budget, primarily, it is a labor-intensive, less electricity and water usage, though there really isn't a capital investment of a rink, per se. What we have done in the past is try to flood the ground. We found that to be very, very unsuccessful since I've been here. My understanding is, was much more successful years, years passed, but the last couple of years, we've had trouble with that. What I think the answer to your question is, is that we have a meeting, I think we're scheduled for the 18th, where the Teen Center Board is starting to have those conversations now with Mr. McCullough and the Parks and Recreation, Parks Department, excuse me, and starting to have conversations about what can we do next year to ensure that we have good ice. The last two years, you're absolutely correct, we had insufficient weather to maintain the ice. We would get the ice, we'd get it going, we'd get it down, we'd get 40 degrees, and then all the efforts that you put into it were dissipated in that. So I think the question is, if you're interested, I would be more than happy to invite you to that particular meeting, even if not to participate, but to listen to. You may have some ideas and suggestions. Traditionally, we hold those at the teen center, so I'll get with you afterwards, and we can look at that timeframe. So the goal really is, how do we, what do we have to do with the program? So we're not, we're not simply pouring water on the ground, hoping for colder weather. Are there other options for us, opportunities for us, to ensure that the likelihood that we're going to have skating for a significant amount of time is much better than what we currently have been doing for the last 10 to 12 years? So that's our goal in moving forward. Thank you.
Science Director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City Attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public Safety Director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
DPW Director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Quine?
Yes. I think the city crew has done an excellent job in snowplowing and keeping up, and there's some trimming to jump on that, but I hope they can find a little time to knock down some of the banks on the major intersections like Ethan Maple is really a bad one. Unless it starts snowing, but I mean, if you've got a break in the action, I mean, some of these banks are really bad. I'll tell you that, I think you've done a great job.
Yeah, Ethan Maple was actually cleaned out this morning.
Oh, great, thank you.
Starting this morning, we've got a break in the weather right now, so the first thing that we've done is tried to clean, clean the roads. We've got hard-packed snow, we've got a lot of snow that's on the streets, so we're applying some salt to those, to the major streets, and then having to plow and keep the slop out of them. But starting today, the crew that started at 4:00 AM spent the first three to four hours cleaning off some of those dangerous intersections on Maple Street from 12th to up close to Sixth Street. So that's our intention through the rest of the weekend, as long as the weather holds out, is to start cleaning up some of those, and trying to do those early in the morning before school starts and all the traffic comes back out on them. We've also had to take a couple days just to pile the snow down at the beach, because that parking lot was completely full, not just from the snow that the city halls, but private contractors. And in fact, I've called every single contractor and asked them for their assistance in keeping whatever they bring down there stacked up, because it was, it was full one day.
Jeff, one more if I may. Hey, when you say we're running the water for the community, what kind of repercussions you might think you're going to have down the wastewater plant?
I don't see, I don't foresee any repercussions. The plan runs very efficiently when we've got the low-flow periods during the, you know, the summer months of July and August, and it also operates when we've got the high-flow months with all the CSOs and the INI that's currently...
You think the flow's going to double? That's what I was going for. Do you think the flow is not going to double, or stay just up on maybe 100,000 or 200,000?
I think it'll come up several hundred thousand, but certainly it'll be below what the, what the plant's capacity is.
Well, yeah, that plant, if you stay under 1,200, that plant will function well.
Yeah. So I really don't anticipate any functional issues there.
Jeff, I do have one question. Thank you. It is nice to drive my pavement, so thank you. I didn't know we had pavement for a while.
Yeah, and it's not white.
The, and I noticed knocking down the banks this morning was nice, when I drove out on 10th to Maple. The plowing of the sidewalks by the high school, we're going to the high school, is that in the plan? Because the narrow, the road is kind of narrow now, and the kids are walking, kind of a situation that's...
Yep. The sidewalk plow this winter has actually run more than it has in the past. We've been starting it at 4:00 AM, we've been running it, starting at 4:00 AM and running it until noon, and then when we've got staff available in the afternoon, we're trying to get another three, two to three hours of operation of it after with the second shift. The important thing to understand about that sidewalk plow is, there's, I don't know the exact number, but there's, in the neighborhood of 70 miles of sidewalks in the city, and we've got one machine to try to do all of it. So the way that it's currently prioritized is to do the routes that are around the schools, around Kennedy, MCC, and the high school, and then from there, it branches out to the major streets and the highway, and from there, it's a route that takes us into all the other neighborhoods. We've only made it around the entire city a couple times this year, in some places only once, because every time it snows, you have to start that program back over. We are, we're having some internal discussions about some ways that we can make that improved in the future. And one of the point is, because we're running it more, it's breaking down more. So last week, it was, it was out of service the entire week. We broke a drive shaft on it. So now we're, this week, we're trying to get caught back up on those, and if, if it doesn't snow for a while, we'll have a little bit bigger impact.
Is there any alternatives to clearing that sidewalk over by the high school? Other than the sidewalk?
Which sidewalk are we...
It's on the, be on the south side.
On 12th Street, yes. The intention is, the intention is for us to continue working to get over to there.
This morning was, you know, the kids walking, and a little uncomfortable traffic coming from the other side, so...
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Airborne Tim Zier?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Woodland?
Ah, yes. Next week, next meeting, I will not be here, and following Tuesday, I won't be in, I'll be in Miami for a boat show, so...
You have.
I'll raise.
I won't be here, I guess.
You'll figure out.
And I have nothing, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to have a motion without support.
King Andrew.